Before we start tonight, we have a special acknowledgement to do. So, as you all know, we have several people retiring coming up. And one of those individuals is Mr. Doug Smith. Tonight will be his last meeting.
Oh.
And so, in honor of that, we have a plaque for him. And against my better judgment, we are going to give him the floor to speak. So Doug, seriously, on behalf of the Board of Education, this plaque is for the services to the students and to the right to our two school districts from 2010 to 2024. And personally, thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Doug's got a hugger. That is a first.
He's not a speaker either.
I just want to say thank you guys to the board and thank you for 14 years of being in this district. I am honored to have been a part of it and am thankful, as I leave, of where we are as a district and what the board's done to make that a reality. And I just hope that the focus remains on the right stuff and keeping our focus on making sure that our kids are set up for success with strong academics. And that's the focus. So, I'm proud of the district, proud of our kids, proud of our teachers, and proud of where we've been. So, thank you.
Okay, then I have 601, so let's bring the meeting to order. Make a note that all board members are present. And Dawn, could you have your kids please start us with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I have allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve and adopt the agenda, please.
Show move.
There's a motion and second. Did you get that? Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard seven zero. MSBA Board Report, can you get a moment, please, Elizabeth?
With a look back at MSBA's Advocacy Day held on April 9th in Jefferson City. Preparations for the event took place throughout March. MSBA's Spring Virtual Meeting and the Lunch and Learn webinars prepared school board members for their meetings with legislators and provided
Sorry, the chair for
issues now before the Missouri General Assembly as it heads for its May adjournment. Senator Carla Esslinger spoke during the Advocacy Day event at the Millbottom before the program headed to the Capitol. Senator Esslinger applauded school board members for putting children first.
And I want to thank you most importantly for always to me, always, always putting children first. Your decisions should never be based on what is good for the individual. It cannot be based on what is good for maybe a particular aspect of your team, to your aspect of your school district. But you guys have this huge challenge that you have to look at the whole. School board members have to look at all and be able to truly navigate that school district. And I just, I totally applaud you because it's not particularly the highest paid job, is it? Right?
At the Rotunda, the Carter D Award Excellence in Advocacy Award was presented to Jennifer Wolfstein, overly of the Kansas City Public Schools Board of Education. The award is given annually to a past or present board member who has excelled at advocacy. Jennifer stressed the importance of protecting public education.
The work that I'm very proud of, of course, I'm very proud of my children and my family, but working on behalf of all the children in Missouri, I'm really super passionate about public education and protecting it. It is completely under attack right now, and it is our job as school board members to try to do everything within our power to keep that from happening.
Advocacy Day also included a student showcase at the Capitol where students from districts throughout the state were on hand to discuss and demonstrate innovative programs in their districts. Senator Lincoln Huff also spoke at the event and visited the showcase to see firsthand the amazing students and programs from across the state. The deadline is approaching to sign up for your district's free emergency operations plan development tool. MSBA, in partnership with the Department of Public Safety, is offering another school safety improvement program for fiscal year 24, but the offer expires on June 1st. The program provides public school districts that did not participate in last year's funding program with one year at no cost access to MSBA's online emergency operations plan development tool, MoEOP. John McDonald, the Chief Operating Officer of MSBA Center for Education Safety, sat down with CES's Bob Blasmeier to discuss the importance of a safety plan.
It's always easier to justify what you've done than try to justify what you didn't do.
Absolutely.
And that conversation really needs to be had in every school in the state to understand why we need a tool.
It does.
That builds an EOP, and not just here in Missouri, but around the country.
Right.
If you're a school district right now that doesn't have an EOP anywhere, you've got problems.
It makes no sense not to have a plan because, you know, the safety of your school is centered around that plan. Everything, all the procedures you do for school safety is included in that plan. So that is the focal point of your school's safety initiatives.
So that really is the foundation for advocacy. You have that EOP tool. It's a foundational aspect which will build the entire
Absolutely, yes.
Visit the MSBA website for more information on how to register for your district's free MoEOP tool and upcoming EOP regional workshops. Make plans now to attend MSBA Summer Summit, June 24th and 25th in Branson. Join school board members and leaders from across Missouri to learn about emerging trends and hot topics in education. The summit's general session features Megan Johnson, a generational expert, speaker, and author. With the workforce spanning across five generations, it can be a struggle to find the right balance between the sometimes conflicting needs of each generation.
Now, my presentation is titled Zap: The Generational Gap, and that's what we're going to do. Now, some of you are thinking, I can already feel you thinking this, you're thinking, mm, I bet this is just going to be one of those generational bashing sessions. Or it's going to be one of those sessions where they're going to tell us that we have to throw out all the good stuff we've been doing all these years, and we have to sacrifice everything for somebody else. No, no, no. Not only are we going to talk about the qualities each generation brings into the workplace, but we're going to talk about the strengths and the action items you can take to improve your multi-generational relationships.
Also, be sure your board is represented at the June Delegate Assembly to be held in conjunction with the Summer Summit. Delegates will be electing state officers for the coming year at that meeting. The nominating committee is proposing a slate of officers for consideration. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website as well as an explanation of this year's process. Registration information for the Summer Summit is also posted on the website. And finally, if you've been following MSBA's social media pages, you've seen many of the regional winners of MSBA's student scholarships. Congratulations to all of the regional winners and to Zach Shaki of Jefferson City, who is also the statewide winner. All of the essays from the regional winners are on the MSBA website. There were a record number of entrants this year, and these students truly exemplify the amazing learning happening in every corner of the state. Congratulations to all. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in June for the next MSBA Board Report.
Does anybody want to add anything to that?
I was just going to ask you, Dr. Way was planning on attending that.
I am not attending the June one, but as far as that Missouri EOP, yes, we're going to try to get on in on that before the first.
And the other comments on the MSBA Board Report? Okay, moving on, we've got public comments. We have two individuals. Mr. Frank Zycan is first, and Frank, I'm assuming you're wanting to talk about Prop 67/25 bid package number two?
Yes.
That's, you have school expansion written on here.
Right.
Okay, go ahead. Vote is yours.
So, the good news is, Mr. Bond was here and I was able to have a chat with him, so there was a lot of stuff I was going to talk about that I can skip past because of that conversation. However, you guys are going to vote on a contract tonight for him. And as we go through this process, we're always talking about how concerned we are with dollars our district does or does not have, and how we always need money to spend on this hand. Well, on this hand, we're constantly throwing around hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions of dollars, that could be probably better spent in other areas. So, the discussion that I had with Austin Jones last year talked about how we can cap contracts to ensure when we have overruns and whatnot, we're a little bit better protected. And that's actually being done in this contract by simply stating the amount as a flat fee. And I know we're not talking huge dollars here, but if the dollar figure they're figuring their charges at, that would be $2.1 million for the four additional classrooms over there at East. I suspect it will come in a little bit less. He says no, I guess we'll see what it's been upon. However, in order to protect us, I would actually change that language, and he said he may be amicable for that, to where it is a flat fee of $151,200 for 7% of the project cost, whichever is less. And that's it.
Okay, next person, Mrs. Kristy Sherman, and she would like to address us regarding the CSIP.
Have you, I haven't done this before, you standing in the middle?
You do want to be
Okay. So, instead, my name's Kristy Sherman, and I wanted to address the board today about the evidence-based grading system that the middle school adopted this year and share some of my reflections from the year, having a son there in seventh grade. I've talked to the principal and both principals and teachers probably five times this year to just try and help myself understand how it works, how to help him achieve his goals for the year. Sam was a straight A student in sixth grade, and as a progress this spring, he had one A in his classes. And so, obviously, that was probably not just due to one thing, like a grading system. He's growing up, and other things are probably included in that. But it is my concern that some of it is attributed to the way that we are changing and went through this change this year, which is why I'm here. I'm not an expert nor an educator, so bear with me. I'm just a parent, I care about my kids' grades. I, you know, it's my job to educate my child. The school is a resource that I use to do that, that we all use to do that. And it was really challenging this year to do that. So, I will have three of my four children at the middle school next year, so if you hear panic, they will all be there, and I'll figure this out with all of them. So, it's too, you know, it's too short to go over all my feedback. I'd be happy to discuss it with anybody that was interested in hearing more about the actual experience. You know, my greatest concern right now is that we're talking about caring at the high school level and, you know, how that fits in to the college world and the higher education and makes me nervous as a parent. Not only that, but just teaching them at a young age how to manage their GPA. And if I feel like we're not doing that at the middle school level anymore, he doesn't know how to improve his grades. And so, my only request really today is to ask the board, you know, what is the plan for administration to evaluate what this year has brought on? What were our goals of adopting a program like this? And, you know, can we revisit them? Did it make sense that we start making progress towards that goal? Have we, you know, the research on the pros and cons, did the pros materialize the way we thought they would? Are we concerned about the cons? And, you know, have the CSIP numbers gone up? Have we seen improvement? Was that even the goal? I don't know as a parent, what the goal was, is that wasn't really communicated out? So, you know, are we seeing that, you know, how do the stakeholders feel? The con that I've read the most, which is Google, because I'm an educator, was teacher burnout. How do our teachers feel about this year? How did that go? That makes me nervous as a parent. So, you know, can we ask those questions? Can we get teachers and students and parents and administrators together and talk about what went wrong, how we can do it better? What's the way to continue it and really find, you know, a successful implementation throughout the school if that's what we decide is the best thing for the school to do? So I know this was piloted, you know, preparing our kids for that higher education, managing GPAs is all really important. So, I'm sure your other parents have shared things with you as board members. The board member that I was speaking with thought it would be helpful to come and speak about it in person. You can imagine I was a little excited about that, but here I am because I do think we had some problems this year, we can do it better, we, you know, had some pretty substantial risk in not addressing them, and what happens to our kids is they continue to grow through their education in life. So, thank you, I'm happy to help in any way I can, you know, everybody can find me. Thanks.
Ms. Sherman?
Yeah.
Can you, you have a written document there?
Yeah, you want to?
Can you?
I don't want it. It's yours.
You'll get that scanned and sent to us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. I appreciate that. Okay, with everybody's permission, on the agenda, instead of doing the program evaluation, back to school care first, I'm going to move the East Elementary presentation to the first thing. Does anybody have any objection to that? Okay, so, Dawn?
All right, so we're going to start with our presentation. I know in December, our kiddos came in and they presented over their writing and how they continue to improve that with their backup writing. We believe, obviously, in the district, we believe in the whole child, and today we have Coach Hamilton coming in. She's going to, with her guests, talk about what she does to develop the rest of the child through our PE and our specials classes. She, I kind of joke with her, she's kind of that feeder team to help them get into and get that mindset up. There is a lot that school has to offer, and the sports and the movements is just as healthy for the brain as us teaching them to read and write. Coach Hamilton does an incredible job partnering with our teachers and ensuring that she crosses over as much as she can of anything going on in the classroom, also incorporated. So they are going to kind of go through some of the things that they learn with Coach Hamilton every day, and then at the very end, she wants to talk about a program that she brought to me that we're really excited about hoping to bring to our kids as well. So I'm going to now
Okay. So, they all told me they were not nervous, which is awesome. So they are ready to talk, I think. So just really quickly, what we do at East Elementary for PE looks very different than what we do at West. It's a lot of skill development, a lot of spatial awareness. You guys have no idea the amount of time we spend on spatial awareness because they will run around and crash into walls and each other because they have no idea what's happening around them. So you design a lot of games and things where you have a small space that gradually builds and builds, and when you think about sports, you have out of bounds lines, like that's a necessary part of it. But lots and lots of skills development, different games, working on throwing and catching and kicking and bouncing and just all kinds of different stuff. So, when Dawn came and asked me this last month, I started taking just some pictures of things we've done. So Easton is going to start us off, he's going to talk about our last unit that we did was golf and some of the And then Anna is going to move on to just different things we've done in PE and what her favorite thing is. She specified that's what she wanted to talk about. And then Reagan is going to finish it off with PE games, which was a whole different class that we do as an extension of PE and then one cross-curricular activity at the end of the year. So, you ready, Easton? Okay.
First, we work out those parts, then
Hold on.
Then we talk about obstacles. And then the first person we like gets to make their own obstacle, then we work together to make that our obstacle.
So they got lots and lots of equipment, and you got to design your own after they had gone through the course. Did you find it challenging to have to work with different people and design obstacles? How come?
I don't know.
Did everybody have the same ideas? Or did everybody have different ideas sometimes? Yeah, so lots of problem solving. That was probably your favorite part, though, right? They like loved designing their own obstacle course. It was the best. So, I mean, you can see they got very, very creative on the different courses that they would design to be able to golf on after they worked on their progression. So, all right, you ready, Anna? Okay.
My favorite thing in PE, basketball.
There we go.
I like to do the basketball, and I also really like to do the stretches. And I like to do everything.
Yeah, okay. Will you go to the next slide? So what specifically on the running do you like to do?
I like to be the first.
When I asked her, she said, I want to talk about how we do the fitness test and we run and I beat the boys. Which she does.
She didn't want to talk about
Yes. So, the state requires that at fifth, seventh, and the ninth grade, we do fitness testing, you turn the scores in. But I start in kindergarten just so that they start learning how to do that, and we have a sheet that I track starting in kindergarten. And by second or third grade, when they start understanding what that means, that's the first thing they want to know. What did I do last time? Which is awesome because that's what they strive for then when they test the next time, how can I beat it? We have a leaderboard, and they like flock around the leaderboard when I update that. They want to know if they got it or what they need to do to improve in order to get there, which is great. So that by fifth grade, they're hopefully, if not meeting, pretty close to meeting what the state, I won't say requirements, but what they would like the general guidelines to be. So, all right, your turn. PE games, like what kind of things do you do in the PE games?
We color, we we build stuff, we we tend to make food, and we have like a station that is like, like teacher's station with board and desks with whiteboards and white posters and stuff.
So this is, every three weeks, we switch it out, but it's really, it was an idea that was started about four years ago-ish. I started noticing that our students were having a harder and harder time just with playing games and being able to win and lose appropriately, struggling with perseverance. I shot the ball one time, I missed it, and, you know, now I just, I can't possibly try again, I just can't do it. And so I wanted to see if we couldn't figure out a way to design things that they could do to regularly just try to work on that. So board games, learning how to win and lose, creative play that they honestly don't get enough time to do in early elementary, being able to work with each other, and teamwork, and just social skill development that they do during that time. But there are more fun games, not necessarily PE-related, but just fun things that they can do that definitely has improved the last four years in PE when we do competitive things. So, and then you want to talk about our last activity that we did?
So we, we drawed, we had cardboard board, and then we drawed a flower pot, a pot, and then we went outside and put flowers in it.
So we made bases, and then we went on a nature walk in PE and found flowers. Lots of weedy flowers and put them in the bases that they could take home. Beautiful. Awesome. So then the last thing that I want to talk about, I am on several different PE blogs and websites and whatever, and someone had posted that they had just started an all-kids bike program. So I looked it up, and I was like, holy cow, we need to do this. So, this program allows you to bring it to your school. They supply 24 bikes, the racks to store them on, helmets, a teacher bike to be able to model. They all start as striker bikes so that they learn balance, and then they come with a conversion pit that has the pedals and the kickstand. But it's teaching kids how to ride bikes. And there is actually nothing, I feel like that is more a lifetime sport than teaching a kid how to ride a bike because once they know how to do it, they know how to do it for the rest of their lives. And I don't think that a lot of our kids know how to do it, whether they live on a gravel road or they just don't have access to a bike. But I think East is the perfect place to do that. We have a huge gymnasium, we have a great little circle loop in the back that they can go out, and we can have a bike riding game on. But I think it would be something that would just be, I mean, it's life-changing, I think, for kids to be able to have their own mode of transportation and be able to get exercise in that way. It would be something that we would love ideally to get funding by December so that in the spring, that can be a big chunk of our spring is learning how to ride a bike. So really, I bring that to you because any context that you have, we're going to be starting to look for sponsors so that we can raise money to bring the program to East Elementary hopefully next year. So, shoot them our way. Anybody have any questions?
You guys did a great job.
They are awesome. Thank you.
And I just want to say a huge shout out to Coach Hamilton. Every time I walk in there, anybody walks in there, she's all about the authentic. So there's no plastic clubs in there. She's got real golf clubs. I'm like, oh, what are you doing? But you also notice in the picture, she's big on teaching them the proper way to do everything, so trying to get their hand placement right, and she'll go and re-coach them and help them out. It's with every sport she does with them, with every activity, it's all about your kindness and your support of, okay, let's talk about that again. If you change your hand this way, you're going to get that ball to go higher, and it's going to make the arc. And she just takes that time, it makes it fun. I could not be more excited about the, when she came to me about the games she started with teaching them Uno and all those old games. And it was hard because the kids were like, I want to go first. No, I don't want to lose. No, I want the red one. And now you go in there, they can play games with each other without fighting, they know how to do rock, paper, scissors, who's going to go first. She's got a strategy for everything, and she just keeps growing it. The theatrical play, the pretending we're a teacher, and by the way, Anna?
Yeah.
You're going to hire her someday. So, she's practicing now, and she's got some amazing jobs. Parents are like, if she wasn't so young, she'd be a child prodigy for it. But it's also getting them into what are the opportunities of their world. So I love that Coach brings them the athletic, but also there's more than just like a nature walk. It's getting out, it's good for their mind, and they come out refreshed and ready for it. So, thank you. And she's always bringing a new idea. Bye. All right. Then one last thing, I want to present, I have a stack here, but that's because we're like to represent a group. So this year, we had East and West exchanging with our PTC, growing, and just navigating that. And we've had five amazing parent volunteers that have just taken and continued some great traditions that we've had in elementary buildings, but then built upon those, connected the community even stronger than probably what we were able to do. I don't know if you've seen pictures on the, the community outreach during the Teacher Appreciation Week was incredible. I mean, every day you felt like, wow, another something that the community, and it was donated by this person, and that was because of three of the links here and the other two who weren't able to make it. I don't know if you saw the end of the year park play at the playground. It was incredible. The kids just ran around, had fun. You felt like you were at a block party from a long time ago, I mean, with food trucks and a dunking booth, which I think we should take that out, but Matt, what do you think?
I think we should do that longer.
You think we should?
Longer.
I'm really old, I was really sore after. If you ladies wouldn't mind standing up. And I'm also trying, I know I'm, Matt, I'm probably speaking for you as well.
You are absolutely, Dawn.
We're presenting it together, that's okay. But we've got Katie, make sure I'm getting it right here, Kat, she put your full name, that's okay, and then Kelly. They are three of the five who are doing incredible things for the PTC, connecting our community, and then just taking the idea and continue to launch it. So we cannot thank you guys enough. Thank you so much. Our kids and the money you're raising, we just had a reptile assembly.
Cool.
It was incredible. All it was is an email saying, are y'all okay? Yes, and they did it all. It was incredible. So, thank you so much. Our kids learned so much. We also learned a lot about staff who do not like reptiles. If you guys don't mind coming up here, thank you, and we hope to continue to partner. Thank you.
There you go.
Yeah. Thank you.
Our teachers, like, our teachers literally were like, that was the best teacher for teachers we've been with. That was bullshit as you get.
Thank you. Thank you. No, you guys do not have to say.
No, you guys do not have to stay.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn. Okay, moving on, uh, we'll go back to item A, Program Evaluation After School Care. Who's, uh, presenting this?
I'm going to throw it to Dr. Way, but he will announce our...
We have, yeah, we have Rick Deline here. Rick is the Director of Club Operations for Boys and Girls Club, and he's got a couple slides. And I think today was our last day, wasn't it?
Today was the last day for the year, so. We weren't able to, uh, be open tomorrow because some of our staff is already employed by the Wright City School District and they're being consumed the whole day with field day stuff. So, um, shout-out again to Coach Hamilton, she's one of our staff and, uh, really does a great job of this. And, uh, we're very appreciative of how much of an asset she's been. So, um, if you were here last year, some of this is, is redundant, but, uh, Boys and Girls Clubs of St. Charles Cabbie, we are a youth development program. Um, we are not a daycare, the kids don't come there and just color and play outside all day. We teach, uh, um, we do the next slide, please. Three pillars of learning, which is academic success, healthy lifestyles, and character and leadership development. We try to implement in everything we do, uh, we use the acronym FORCE, that everything we do is fun. There's opportunities and expectations for them to learn things and do things that they're not doing their, their regular school year. Recognition and, and awards that we give once a month. Um, we try to build supportive relationships with them, and it's always had, always has to be a safe place. Safety is always paramount in everything that we do. Next slide. So our registration, we had two five-year-olds, nine six-year-olds, um, nine seven-year-olds, seventeen eight-year-olds, ten nine-year-olds, twelve ten-year-olds, and seven eleven-year-olds. You can see to the right, the grade level breakdown. Next slide, please. So we taught, um, 116 classes of healthy habits. Uh, we taught 3,078 classes of Project Learn. Project Learn, um, is anything that has to do with learning that's not necessarily academic learning. So Project Learn could be, uh, for example, I'm a retired police officer. If I wanted to teach the kids how to fingerprint, that would fall under Project Learn. If I wanted to teach the kids about Missouri State turtle, the three-toed box turtle, that would fall under Project Learn. Um, so nature and things like that would fall under Project Learn. Uh, Positive Action, 678 lessons taught in that. Positive Action is a program that is about feeling good about who you are, doing things to feel good about it for that, that intrinsic reward. I use Positive Action for ten without knowing I was doing it growing up. I was an abused child in the foster care system, and I found that when I was feeling bad, I did good things for other people and made me feel good. And it was as little as standing at the bus stop and seeing that the neighbors forgot to bring the trash out, and I would run over and pull their trash out, and, right? And I have no idea who did it, it was for me, made me feel good. So we teach that, we teach a lot of that. We teach about, uh, uh, doing good things and, uh, feeling good about doing it. STEM, again, STEM kind of falls into that Project Learn program, but, but we did 97 specific projects. Triple Play Soul is about teaching fair play, teamwork, communication, working together, being a good winner, being, being a good loser, um, some of the things that Coach Hamilton just spoke of. Smart Moves is about, um, making good decisions and healthy lifestyles. So one of the games I like to play with the littles is called "What If?" What if you come home and you see that, uh, there's smoke bellowing out of the windows of your house and your dog's inside? What do you do? Right? And, uh, then we talk about what's the best answer. So, uh, Smart Moves gets into, with the older kids, it eventually gets into, uh, taking care of your body as your body changes and, uh, can even get into healthy relationships and dating, uh, healthy relationships as it comes to siblings and parents and that sort of thing. Power Hour is very specific to academic learning. We did 457 classes of that. That's going to be, uh, new vocabulary words and we're playing hangman with it. Or, uh, math games, or, um, reading games, or things like that. Fine Arts is, is just what it sounds like. Um, we've, uh, made different things, we have 325 classes of that, uh, making different things, drawing, being creative. And then Workforce Readiness, 55 classes. And, uh, our workforce readiness is just basically to help connect the dots, um, the things that kids are interested in today, what sort of careers are found in that. So I always use Minecraft as an example, everyone know what Minecraft is? So we talk about engineering and design and the artwork that goes into marketing and, and just start introducing those concepts. And then the older they get, they get more hands-on stuff of actually trying to do some of this. Uh, one of my favorite things to do is to pretend we've started a restaurant and the kids have to create a menu, and they have to draw their food items, price them, and then we get on the computer and we look up the caloric values of it. And so we're teaching them how to, uh, to find the, the calories of each food to the kids. It's like we did art, we drew chicken legs and whatever. So, next slide, please. So, uh, first, this is our budget, first and foremost, there's a typo for education. We were budgeted at, uh, thirteen thousand five thirty-five, not fifteen hundred thirty-five. So what we actually spent was right on, right on cue for that, uh, thirteen three sixty-nine. Um, Healthy Lifestyles, budgeted at twelve five ninety, came in at twelve seven forty-seven. Leadership, um, came in at eighteen nine seventy-five, budgeted at twelve. Management, um, budgeted at twenty-one thousand and came in at sixteen hundred. The reason for that is we ended up having what's called a LEAD YDP instead of a Unit Director. So the Unit Director is a full-time salary position. We were able to do it with a LEAD YDP part-time, um, moving forward. So, uh, Support, that's going to be your HR and stuff like that. Twelve thousand one twenty was budgeted, we came in at eight thousand three hundred forty-nine. And then Benefits, again, most of our staff is part-time, um, budgeted five thousand five twenty-seven, came in at four thousand. So overall, we were budgeted about seventy-seven thousand dollars for staffing, and we came in around sixty thousand dollars. Next slide. So we spoke about recognition, we do, uh, Youth of the Month each month, these are some of our winners. Uh, this is based on attitude, um, engagement, performance, um, improvement. So we, we've had kids that have had disciplinary problems, you know, constantly and have gotten better and better and better, and that, that allowed them to become Youth of the Month. So encouraging that good behavior. Next slide. That's it. I would say, uh, you know, if we have, if we had any challenges, I would say that, um, the internet has been a huge challenge for us, um, using the guest wifi and, and getting on the programs that we use through Boys and Girls Club of America. And, and I think a simple solution to that would maybe give us access to like a desktop with a hard line to it instead of... But we're managing, it's happening. The other biggest problem that we have is, uh, families and, um, even teachers, understanding that we are a youth development program and we are funded by grants, and that's why a membership is only fifty dollars per year, the after-school program costs fifty dollars per year, um, because we're funded by these outside grant programs. So if parents are picking their kids up right away, we don't have opportunity to teach them these programs, and thus I can't submit results for the deliverables for these kids. So if there's any way to, to help us get the message out and leave your kids with us a little bit, don't pick them up right away. So our hours are basically two-thirty till seven PM, Monday through Friday, until six PM, or Monday through Thursday and six PM on Fridays. So, um, most of our kids are pretty much out the door by six o'clock. Uh, our littles are pretty much out the door by four forty-five, five o'clock. They, they get picked up at the basket. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Um, I, I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, thank you for everything you do, first of all, and thank you for being here tonight. And, um, it looks like a great program, and clearly the kids are having a great time from all of the very genuine smiles that we see in the pictures. Slide four, I just had a question on that. Are all of these, these numbers right here are all specific to just our, our district, right? Our program?
To our kids.
Yeah, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Just a question, um, and I think it was under Smart Moves, you had mentioned that some of the things that you might cover would be, you know, for the older kids, uh, body changes, you know, getting into dating and that kind of thing. I'm just curious, you know, um, do, do parents have the opportunity to review anything that might be sensitive or...
Yeah, absolutely, and, and fifth grade, we're not getting into, uh, real in-depth stuff within all of the curriculum is age-appropriate. So, and we, we make sure that we're not teaching fifth-grade curriculum with kindergarteners and their women.
Sure, sure.
So, um, we, you know, we talk about how to treat each other. Part of, part of Smart Moves would be to have an agreement on how do we disagree? What's fair, what's not fair?
Right.
What, how can we work our problems out and the problem solved? So, um, you know, in terms of relationships, you know, um, how will you disagree with your significant other or your spouse? Right, what's, what's fair, what's not fair?
I see.
So conversations like that. So when they get up into like seventh and eighth grade, we start teaching about domestic violence and things like that, more in-depth and...
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think that internet problem can be fixed, right?
Surely.
That's, uh, that's your last task.
Don't say that yet.
On June 30th, on June 30th at, uh, five PM.
Understood. Thank you, thank you very much.
Be, Rick.
Okay, the next, uh, item is RSP enrollment projections.
Mr. President, we'll have Jenna Wallace, um...
I'm admitting her now.
And we'll be zooming her in, I believe.
Muted right now.
Just think, on June 4th, you can mute me.
Jenna, are you there? Ah, I see her, we're gonna... One second, I need to, uh, share the right thing here. Do we want to see her?
Yes.
Okay, well, let's bring this over here.
No audio, yeah?
Let me turn up the sound a little bit. Okay, Jenna, try again.
Perfect, are you guys able to hear me?
We can now.
Alright, perfect. Elizabeth, are you clicking through the slides?
Yes, just tell me when you need the next slide.
Perfect. Um, good evening, everyone, my name is Jenna Wallace, RSP and Associates. Um, I'm going to walk through the enrollment analysis that we put together for your district. Um, we started working with you guys last year, so this, we heard that last year's presentation, as a lot of the different items are just an update of data analytics and then looking at, um, the next five years of our enrollment based on this year's, um, variables and enrollment outlook. Elizabeth, you can go ahead to the next slide.
One second, I have to, uh, pull this over on my side. Back up if I can find you. Okay, now we're ready.
I did not, you can skip down a couple slides. I'll keep the presentation pretty brief, I'm not going to speak to all sixty-five slides in the report, um, but try to keep more to the main takeaways of our different data. The report's broken out into these four main parts, so a little bit about our enrollment outlook, development and growth, and then part three, um, have the updated projections for this year. Go ahead to the next slide. Go ahead to the next slide. There's a little bit of a hundred-thousand-foot perspective here. We do have the district continuing to increase these next five years. So we have in this forecast about a twenty percent growth over the next five years, which is about a three-hundred-and-seventy student increase. One thing that's different in this report than last year's is we have integrated the, uh, facility master plan items that were worked through, um, in this past year. So we'll talk a little bit about how different changes to our facilities and grade configuration is, is in the report. And then all of the recent data looking at our development activity for our housing and then economic growth with AFG. Lots of different maps in the report. The first visual here is looking at the district boundary. Go ahead to the next slide. Thank you. We have RSP planning areas, which this is part of the methodology of the forecasting model. So looking at every individual neighborhood and subdivision individually, knowing where we have students living in single-family, multifamily, mobile home, area of new unit. Everything comes back to, um, this geographic level to know that in our different areas of the district, we have a tendency to see more students versus less students. All of that is included in the forecast model. So the model here is just looking at, um, our different variables. And so thinking about this visual and understanding the model, it's pulling in city-state county census data and of course, school district data, um, pushing out the most likely forecasting result. So the different variables in the model, some lead to enrollment decrease, some mostly lead to enrollment increase. And what we're doing is, um, balancing all those different variables out to create the most likely forecast. One of the key variables, um, that we look at is our live birth data. So we have here for Warren County, the number of mothers who gave birth with a Warren County address over time, looking at that market share of the number of live births to kindergarteners coming in. Um, this is a pretty important demographic trend. In most counties and states, we're seeing less live births per year as millennials waiting longer to have kids or having fewer kids than past generations. Um, it's one of those demographic trends that we want to keep our eyes on and is really crucial when we look at our kindergarten classes. We utilize our past enrollment by grade, um, a lot in the report, so looking at what our current class sizes are. The district, um, increased this year by about forty-seven students from last year's end-of-year count. Um, our smallest grade in the district is twelfth grade, which that's always a good rule of thumb of looking at in the growth, is if the kindergarten class is greater than the sitting senior class, so in this case, an indication of growth. Our largest class in the district this year is eleventh grade. And I want to point that out a little bit because it is one of those, um, limitations when we look at future growth. So if you kind of track, um, this visual where we're looking at the hundred-and-fifty-four students, um, in eleventh grade, how that largest class has worked its way through the system, gaining each student per year. The classes behind it are smaller, so we would need to see cohort growth year to year for these next three years to fully replace that eleventh grade class that's become larger. So just one of, more of the limitations to seeing a high school enrollment growth these next couple of years as that largest grade exits the system. Also in the model, we look at our cohort student change. So this is exactly what I was saying there, the likelihood of the grade increasing in student count year to year. So most of our cohorts, um, tend to increase, especially at those grade configuration changes. Likely students that may be attend private or parochial coming into middle school or high school district. We see just a little bit of cohort loss in the high school level, which is pretty common. Um, maybe some credit recovery or early dropouts, um, do impact that kind of ten to twelfth grade bubble where we tend to see, um, some cohort loss year to year. Also in the model, we look at student migration. So this is looking at completely new students coming into the district, orange bars. And past students exiting the district, green bars. And so the district has a positive migration rate where you do tend to see more new students coming in than students exiting the district. The next visual here is at, um, the student count change. So looking at all our different neighborhoods in the district, where have we seen neighborhoods producing more students for the past five years, that's the, that's the orange. And then which neighborhoods have been decreasing in student count. And then which neighborhoods have been decreasing in student count. So, they have maybe been aging out without new families funneling through to increase the yield rate. So, looking at kind of a snapshot of where the last five years have changed our students. And then the last visual in this section is our student heat density map. So, looking at all of our students in the district, where do we have our greatest student density? So, you can really clearly see these two red bubbles indicating very near to the two mobile home communities where we have our hottest student density in the district. So, I'm gonna put it there. I can't see anyone's faces, so if there's any questions on any of these slides, I can speak to any of those questions or we can save them for the end.
Does anybody have any questions right now?
No.
Hearing no questions, continue on, please.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, so part two in the report looks at housing and development.
Keep going?
Yep, you can keep going, thank you. We always start with this first visual, which is a correlation graphic. So, looking at year-to-year change over this 10-year period, the relationship of our housing continuing to grow, our population continuing to grow, correlating with enrollment growth year to year. So, just kind of visually looking at how these three important variables are intertwined together. The next visual we look at is the relationship between students and housing type. And so, for this case, we're providing higher different grade levels. The relationship between the single-family units, multifamily units, and mobile home units. And we separated these three because there's a very different yield rate relationship between the different housing products. So, looking at our single-family inventory, the district sees about 23 students per 100 single-family homes. Per 100 mobile home units, the district sees around, on average, 52 students. So, that's, right, that's like a 50%, almost like a one-to-one relationship with our mobile home. And then multifamily, when we're looking at apartments, townhomes, twin homes, any of that, the district has a lower yield rate than the other two inventories, which is a 22 students per 100 multifamily homes. And we provided this a little bit more, just to illustrate, when there is new developments coming in, there's new housing, there's a different relationship with the type of housing unit that it is, the number of bedrooms and the price point. So, looking at that multifamily a little differently when we pull out our... Go ahead to the next slide, perfect. You can kind of see that illustrated here with our student yield rate over time, where despite having less new mobile homes being built in the community, not that there isn't, but there's definitely more single-family homes built in this time period, that yield rate has continued to increase over these past 10 years, while single-family's been pretty stable. So, indicating a turnover of those units. Multifamily with the new apartments and with added inventory has actually decreased in a student yield. So, the new apartments coming online or inventory that maybe has less bedrooms than a single-family or a mobile home unit has been generating less students in the district. The next couple of visuals just look at our housing inventory, so looking at average year-built, our median home value, so looking at the price point, on average, those planning areas, and then our recent year-built. You can definitely see these clusters of where the new units have been built in the district. And then looking at over time, the different development activity per decade. And then, Elizabeth, you can pause here on this map. The next thing we look at is that potential for future growth. So, meeting with the cities and counties, we put together this visual, which is looking at current five- and 10-year potential development activity. And this is why I spend some time talking about that yield rate, because all of these different projects, they have a unit type and they have a price point, and we're gonna be basing it off of the student data, the previous yield rate, to accurately forecast how many students we think are being developed or will be developed from these different projects. So, this is the visual that looks at the different areas of potential development. Elizabeth, you can go to the next slide. We're looking at all these different areas that were in the map, put into a table, so the type of unit and the potential units that are to be built. Overall, looking at a very positive outlook for housing and residential growth, especially with everything that's happening in your community, definitely a main driver to all of this enrollment forecast. And then also in this section, our model brings in a factor for economic development, so pulling in AFG and our expected job growth in the region. Just knowing that, that's gonna be a very positive factor in our enrollment analysis as well. So, that goes pretty briefly on all of this data and how that is illustrated in the forecasting model. Any questions on these slides?
Kyle has a question.
So, on your development table, I noticed that you guys missed the townhomes that are currently in, under construction, north of the middle school. And on rural curve, I think there may be a new development that might possibly be further south than that. So, just wanted to, and I think we missed some numbers here.
Yeah, I was looking up, it's Vista on the Park, and there's a lot of units over there, and there's people already living in them, so not sure how we missed that.
I thought that was on one of them.
I didn't see it on any of those slides.
They may have...
We did actually, so in our year-built data, we had Vista on the Park finished up. So, we took it to the potential units, because we had all the units built. Not that they're all completely occupied yet.
They're not even built.
As far as year-built.
There's still under construction?
Yeah, I only think half of them might be built, so we're missing some stuff there.
Okay, well, we'll go back and make sure that's accurate there for Vista on the Park.
And then I have a second question. On economic development, we're, we're tracking AFG, but there's, there is secondary development that's already broken ground and underway that's being driven by that too. So, what other growth are you guys seeing besides AFG?
Definitely, exactly what you're saying, when we're, we know when these very projects come in, there's always this kind of peripheral economic impact as well, so that's also integrated into the report. This was just kind of a high-level project overview.
Okay. I think those other businesses would be something I would specifically be interested in. We've known about AFG for three years.
Yeah, Jenna, I know I had provided the Economic Development Committee Executive Director, Steve Etcher. Was that someone you guys connected with on this round of evaluation? Or, and if not, we definitely emphasize, he's, you know, very much in the know. And so, is that someone who you had conferred with?
It was. I did talk with him. It might be something where I pull a bit more information into the slide deck, though. I can reach back out and connect with him again.
And guys, I know we don't wanna just, or, you know, perhaps the board didn't wanna just help her with names, but if there are other, you know, kind of folks in that realm, please, you voice them now, and certainly you can channel those to me and I'll get it to Jenna. I know we went through a fairly lengthy exercise, but that was on the first round, and certainly things improved pretty quickly. The first projections you guys did for us.
Anything else? Heidi?
I don't have anything else, thank you.
Continue on, please.
Alright, perfect. So, going into the final part of the presentation here, which is our enrollment projections. We put together this just slide of looking at last year's enrollment analysis and the accuracy of where we landed with our end-of-year count. Also, looking at around 99.5% accurate district-wide. And you see that's, grade is at the high school and then middle school, and it kind of comes down a little bit. And when we dug into this a little bit deeper, really East Elementary having the lowest accuracy, accuracy at 97.5%. Coming in with that lower kindergarten class than forecasted. And that's definitely something that we're seeing in most districts where that kindergarten class is under-projecting in a lot of places. And it may be something where we have live births and those demographic trends, more of a limitation to that model. So, overall, very good accuracy for last year's enrollment forecast. But when we are looking at this year's update, I mean, a little bit of a more limited model at our K-10 first grade to better illustrate the East Elementary grade configuration. Alright, so, looking here, this is our five-year forecast for the district. We have the enrollment growing by 370 students over these next five years, totaling 200, that's 2,005 students. Most of that group here is at the middle school level, and it's kind of an inflated graphic a little bit with these percentages because what we're also illustrating with this graphic is the change in the grade configuration. So, with moving fifth grade next year into the middle school, it creates more of a, like, at least a form of visual-wise, an increase at the middle school and a decrease at the elementary. But it's nothing that an actual class is decreasing, it's just a change in the configuration model. But overall, we're looking at around 10 to 20% growth in each of our grade bands. All of this information, I'll explain on the next slide, looking at breaking this down into our projections by building. And this is also where we illustrate more of our change with the grade configuration. Going to that K-458 model, where you can see where initially what's elementary decreases, but then continues to increase these next five years. And right city build increases by a lot by adding in fifth grade, starting in '24, '25. We've also illustrated, looking at the shading of our, of our different cells in this to indicate some capacity challenges. So, last year, when we presented this report, we were looking at some different over-utilization at the elementary level. But with the grade configuration change and moving fifth grade into the, into the middle school, we're seeing that forecasted challenge existing at the middle school from '26, '27 to '28, '29, increasing to over 600 students in that level. So, kind of just shifts the problem a little bit from the elementary focus into the middle school, looking at that middle school capacity. Go ahead to the next slide. And then the last visual we provide of our projections is looking at our projections by grade. So, looking at our different class sizes, giving that ability to pull each individual grade out of where it's forecasted to be in '28, '29. So, we're looking at the district enrolling over 2,000 students at that point, where the current class size is averaging 132 students. We'd be forecasting the average class size grows to 158 students, which is about a 25-student increase at each level over these next five years. You kind of see how, depending on the current grade this year, how it moves forward. In some years, you see that greater, some maybe a little bit smaller. All of that natural attrition of our students throughout the district. And so, then, kind of the rest of this information is a lot of the different main takeaways and kind of bringing this back to how we use it as a district. So, what questions do you guys have? Is there any other data that could be analyzed to kind of help you guys feel more comfortable with the enrollment forecast?
Anybody have any other questions?
I think the points that Kyle brought up like earlier are important, the additional business. And then, I think we're missing a couple of developments, but other than that...
So, somewhere in here, you had median income. What page was, what page was that on?
It should be page 23 in median household income, median home value.
No, I don't want home diet, home income, like, family incomes. I thought you had a slide on that.
That should be down, sorry, that should be in the appendix.
Forty-three.
Yes.
It was at the top of forty-three, Elizabeth, right there, at the very top, right there.
Well, forty-three is an economic profile of this...
Well, your median household income's in the middle of that.
Right here.
Underneath your population trends, there you go.
Okay, I'm gonna move to the different columns.
At the top.
So, did you see the median household incomes continue to rise?
Yes, so...
I mean, right now, we're at eight, we're at 88.8. What do you see that in five years?
Well, we do have, so this is the census information, and so the census does have the district forecasting as far as income to keep growing, like, around 2.5%. So, we could dig into that a little bit more and give you a better number exactly, but probably around that 2.5 to 3% increase.
Well, the reason I ask is, so right now, I think inflation's at 3.4. I think that's what I read today. So, real, real household income is falling behind, I guess is where I'm going with that. Is despite the fact that you're seeing increase in median household income, you're still seeing, based upon inflation, a lot of that probably being food and fuel and housing, you're seeing, you're seeing folks fall behind a little bit. And I think that's, that's just something interesting we need to consider as we, you know, make our financial decisions going on, and that's why I bring that up.
Yeah, for sure.
Because that was something that caught me when I was looking through this, was that, was that median household income. I was surprised that it was close to 90,000 in Warren County, or in our district. And I wonder what AFG, once they bring that on, if that's going to, because I think those jobs were advertised at 70,000?
Like, with overtime, yeah.
With overtime. I wonder if that's going to bump that number up a little bit, or...
Well, I think it's less than that. If you go to slide 41, their projection is income per capita would be go from 43.5 to 49.4 in 2028. So, two and a half percent change.
Okay.
But that's per capita.
Okay, fair enough. Alright, so that's just something for us to, you know, as we're making decisions about various things, it's something we need to keep in our back of our mind. I mean, that was what caught me as I was looking at this. Any other questions? Okay, what's our next steps, Dr. Berger?
Yeah, well, I was just writing a bunch of notes, but master plan, this will be reflected in the master plan, potentially even the CSET plan, but we'll, we've, if I've learned anything about our incoming superintendent, she's a planner, so we've got a calendar set up for the exact months that she's gonna take on those tasks.
And then I guess the other question is, for the suggestions of Kyle and Heidi, when will we, when will we get an updated presentation?
Jenna, I'll send those neighborhoods to you, you probably captured them anyway, but will those neighborhoods significantly change your projections, or are they just feedback for you guys moving forward?
I'll take a look. I don't think they'll change the projections at all, at all. It's probably more just a visual thing on the enrollment project, or like, on the growth area map. But we'll get all that in the system with my team tomorrow and send you guys an updated report.
So, she sends that right now, and we'll kick that back out to the board of education.
And then I think if and only if we see, you know, differences in our numbers because of it, then we add it to the agenda next month to look at the deltas.
Can do that.
Everybody agree with that?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, guys. You look forward to speaking with you.
Bye-bye.
Jenna?
So, one of the questions that Dave asked me, and I'm gonna bring it up. So, compared to last year, was this, was this report costing us more or less?
We don't have the final number. I think it's gonna be less.
I just saw your email on the invoice.
Yeah, I just saw it. But, I mean, so, because the other thing that, I wish he was here, I don't know if I should wait for him or not, but I'm not.
I should wait for him to open it up, but I'm not. Because he was wanting to know, I think it's a service of value add where I think do we want to continue it year after year after year? I mean, because, I mean, that's, that's the other assessment I think we're going to need from you all is, is this, now, it's good information, but the question is, is it valuable information worth paying for? So I think we're going to need a recommendation from, from you guys to, you know, based upon the cost, you know, is it something worth budgeting? Is it in the, is it in the budget for next year? It is, so.
My, there was holes in it for sure, but my, my only concern is the district, the growth we've already go through, this is almost an insurance policy to a degree on not getting caught off guard and having to deal with those consequences five years down the road thinking we're going to grow X amount and then something drastic happens and then we're caught having to deal with it then.
Hey, Dave, were your ears ringing? They should have been. So you and I had that conversation, I was asking about the cost of what this was, what you and I talked about today. And then also was this a service worth continuing? Do you want to continue on that thread?
I just, what is the annual cost?
Yeah, we were just, we would like to pull it and I know we just, we just asked for the invoice, what, delay the invoice to July 1 or was it going to be before?
Trying to pick this year.
Because if we want to get this one, this report out of this fiscal year's budget, so I can follow up with that cost and then the board can kind of.
If I remember properly, last year was about 40,000 bucks.
And then.
Wasn't it more the first year? Was it?
Well, that was the question we just asked and you would think so because they already have the basis of the work.
And to make sure that you guys can have a conversation about that, we'll put that down as an agenda item, a future agenda item, you know, sooner than later, next, like three months after you, after we have that information on the cost of it. But the other question I asked was, is it in the budget for next year? And the short answer was yes, so assume we're going to get this report next year. And so the 26 is, you know, unless you all want to, unless we want to pull it from the 25 budget. And then Kyle made a point about, you know, although there were holes in this, you know, the question is, is it a good insurance policy so we don't get blindsided by something? So that's the, that was the conversation.
Sure. Blindsided, those numbers are a little bigger.
Okay. Anything else on this before we move on to the room? Okay, Wright City High School updates.
Bobby, Christopher is visiting us again. Welcome, Bobby. Think you were off the hook last month? Or, no, no. You were here, weren't you? That's right.
Sorry. All right, so an update on the Wright City High School. First slide, it's been very wet the last two months, as you guys all know. So we're working between raindrops, site activities, next year, facades slowed down drastically last several weeks. So really, you know, looking forward to sun shining, warmer temperatures and getting dry so we can resume a lot of those activities. Ongoing activities currently, those soil stabilization on site, interior framing and hanging, you know, pretty much I'd say 95% of the building's hung out with drywall already. Overhead piping and duct work, so we've got all the barrier ceiling, which is drywall, the duct work and all the piping below that, the HPDC units, that work's ongoing. The insulators, Jason right behind them, get those pipes wrapped. Rooftop units start up, so today was day one, area A, we got those two units started up. That's a big milestone for us, we can continue on with finishes, so casework and flooring can now resume in those areas or begin in those areas, I should say. Interior electric's ongoing, so, you know, again, we get the rooftop unit started up, the electric was a big piece of that, we do have permanent power at the building currently. Brick veneer's ongoing, we're tracking right now to have all brick veneer done roughly five weeks, four to five weeks as long as we dry it up. I think we're, I think we're hopefully heading in that direction. Glass and glazing is ongoing, so all the windows throughout the building are mostly in, I'd say about 90% complete. We're working on the storefront, so the main dust field when you walk in, the lower section's still boarded up, all the higher glass is in. We're waiting on that film, that bolt resistant glass to come in, security glass with the film, so that's what we're waiting on there. Painting is ongoing, so if you walk in the beginning of the building, you walk into area A, which is, you know, the main entrance to the school, you'll see that that is pretty much done with the exception of flooring and casework. But as you continue to migrate, you know, east throughout the building, it's less and less finished as you work that way. From a painting perspective, we're, you know, we've got block filler and primer down to area D, E, which is, you know, roughly three quarters of the building is at least seen painting or block filler. So that work will resume as we continue to work our way in that direction. Architectural sheet metal, that is ongoing, so that's gutters and downstops, fascia, soffit, those type of things, that works ongoing and going well. Baseball softball field structures, that's one of the standstills we're at currently, we're eagerly waiting to go after the foundations for the dugouts, concession stand foundations, and get all that work tied in together. So in the intermediate time with the wet conditions we've had, we're going after the pavement to there, so we've got a concrete paved parking lot for the baseball fields and the concrete that goes all the way to that point. At that point, it transitions from rock over to area, to highway F. So we're making a focus right now to get that road hard, get that in, get the cure times on it while we're waiting for mother nature to cooperate. So that's what we're going after now. Next slide, please. So looking forward, siding installation, that'll start right around July 1. So there's a cement fiber system that goes on, it's about a two-inch thick fiber system. Primarily, these are used in the future use areas, so if the district ever would decide to expand, which I know that's in the master plan, those are the areas that we would build onto. So anyway, we've got the metal girts of that system are already in place, we've got the insulation on site. Right now, we're just waiting for the actual material for the siding to show up. Those are all pre-measured systems. So right now, we're looking at about another four or six weeks to get that material on site. Once it's on site, we'll get it installed. Again, the baseball softball field structures, it's a matter of getting the foundations in so we can get the, get the CMU on those and get a roof on them. Bleachers and press box, that works ongoing, we're working through the final design components of what that looks like, some more to come on that. And then the front entrance canopy, we just started digging the piers for those yesterday. So we're in the process of getting those set and getting the structural steel right behind it. Next slide, please, thank you. So this is a drone shot on one of the few sunny days we've had looking west, so this is the west elevation, I should say looking east, but the west elevation, which is your front elevation, by the way, this is your main entrance coming in. The canopy obviously sits right in front of that building. North elevation, another shot of the north. And you'll see on the north, you know, pretty much all the brick veneer and all that stuff is wrapped up on that side of the building. The fiber cement system you're going to see is primarily on the south side of the building. Looking north here, northeast elevation, so again, where you see all the yellow, it's hard to see in the picture, but there's horizontal steel girts that run there and then you get a two-inch insulation that sits within that girt cavity and then the fiber cement sits on top of that. Here's your football field, drone shot. Cafeteria is ongoing, so we've been, hold up again with the weather and stacks of the library, then also area G, which is cafeteria. Finally got the roof decking on that, so that's another major milestone, we're right on the cusp of being able to bring in the roof or get the membrane roof put on, which is the last two areas remaining to be in the dry. Any questions or concerns on?
Start at that end a little bit more. Aaron, any questions?
I do not, thank you.
Mr. Kyle?
No.
Kyle?
No.
No.
I don't have any questions, but I would like to schedule another site visit maybe over the summer before a boarding or something again, just to kind of see everything in person.
You bet.
So from your perspective, what's your greatest concern based upon the weather delays and?
That's a loaded question. You know, I would say the two major things would be building envelope completion. So being able to get the roof on the last two areas, area B and area G, that is the driving factor, being able to do all the mechanical, a lot of cool and plumbing behind that. You have to have a dry condition to do that work, so I would say that's number one. Number two would be the site, you know, as far as, you know, the hillside that we had talked about, the football field, that has been a bear to, you know, handle and constantly clean up and just the additional BMDs that are placed there to help divert water and protect that. We had a pretty good run on that till about two nights ago and it just, it nailed us hard two nights ago, so we're still in the aftermath phase of that, so the hillside's a trouble area. But outside of that, I think things are going as well as they can with the site conditions. You know, we can deal with that, we know it's spring, but what that does is closes us off to other areas like where the pre-engineered metal building goes, just east of the football field, trying to get access to get that work completed. That stuff's pretty much been all on stand, you know, standstill here for about two months. So we're eagerly waiting for dry conditions so we can go in and take that route.
I know, and then the other day when you and I were talking, you know, we were talking about getting the impreditioning system going and all that, I'm assuming that's all going now, where you're able to lay floors, will you still kind of waiting for the humidity levels to dry out a little bit?
No, we're good there in a couple areas. So in the areas that we needed, Austin, we've got it. Right now where we're at, we're looking to start tile in the bathrooms in area A here in about a week and a half and they'll, you know, go straight from there to area B and then continue throughout the building. So we're close to that phase of the project. The rooftop units are running in area A, which part of that operates area B as well? A couple areas, so the areas that we needed, Austin, we've got.
You're carrying yourself back?
Well, we're right there. Casework's already sitting at the fabricator, you know, at least for the first few areas ready to come out. So we're in a good position there, we're just wanting to make sure conditions are adequate to do that work. We do have dehumidifiers in there as well, I believe we've got five or six on site currently. So, you know, as, you know, all this rain starts to burn off in June and July, it just becomes 120 and muggy, we'll be able to pull, you know, some of that humidity out and keep better tabs on it.
Okay. Thank you for that. And can I have any questions?
Has the board done on that part of it? I suggest, I know we, you know, have beat the, the, I'm trying not to reach for my glasses, but for the canopy issue, but we might hit the highlights of that and just the highlights and then of course questions that the board might have on each individual PCO.
Sure. Which one do you want to start with?
Well, in our agenda here, let's start with change order PCO 78, which is the additional long jump and triple jump.
Sure.
Then that will go to the canopy and then the additional fencing at the retaining wall, so that work.
Absolutely. So we have looked at long jump, triple jump option in a lot of different ways. Initially, we priced out a single long, I guess, I'm going to butcher this, but a single triple jump running, I believe, east and west. Then we priced up a double triple jump that ran north and south, which is what we're looking at here. There was one other option, I think it was a single triple jump running north and south as well. Some of the cost factors on that vary, vary based on the grade of the practice soccer field, rather, not softball. So it's got a little bit of a crown in it, so just trying to, to shape the earthwork in a manner that the drainage system that sits in those pits would function properly is a lot of the variation in cost of what you've seen, other than obviously going from a single to a double, right? So what we're looking at here is the cost to do a double. So what you have is two lanes where you would run out, so you could hit on each end. So during a track meet, you can have two events going at one time at the same location.
So one of the things that he brought up to me, if you have the pits on either end, that doesn't work because, I thought you told me because you want the kids running the same way due to wind and that kind of thing. So why would you have, so what I just heard him say was, you want to have a sand pit here and a sand pit here.
That is correct.
Okay, the problem that you have is you can't run dual lanes.
Oh, that was the problem on the original, the one that's in the, in the D zone.
Yeah, yeah, but if you put, but the way I thought Fred said it, or somebody said it was, if you, if you have to have the sand pits on the same end so you can run the kids the same way because of the wind and stuff like that, because if, if one of the sand pits is facing west and the other one's facing east, you can only use one because if you got a hard, if you got a headwind, the other lane basically is useless because of the headwind situation.
Well, yeah, help me and I think I know what I want to, I may help here, I may help you if I'm.
Actually, what's happening is one of them, the one that where you're going into the headwind is used as a practice lane. So when they're doing that, you've got competition coming the other way with the wind and they're not as focused on the distance in the practice run and jump, it's more about the stride. So that's how you can be running the practice while you're running the competition in the other.
But I also thought that Fred said you want to be able to run two to get the, because one of the things that came up in that meeting was you want to be able to run two of them simultaneously so that, so the meets went faster.
But you are because you've got the competition lane in the D as well.
Okay, okay.
So you're adding two, one of which will be a practice depending on which way the wind blows.
Okay, so, so the plan would be then we run a track meet, you would always use the one in the D because it has the pits on either end.
Yes.
And then you would either use one or the other outside of the D based upon which way the winds blow.
That's correct.
Okay, so that, that satisfies, does that satisfies everybody's situation where we can run the meets?
My expert track person says yes. So that might work.
Okay, 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 thank you.
I'm pulling from a track expert, just so we'll put that out there.
No, I appreciate you answering that question, thank you.
Any other further questions on PCO 78?
Okay, next one is the canopy?
Sure, so the front canopy, I'll wait for it, here it's 76.1. So what we have here, the structure, like I said, has already been purchased and ready for steel erection to take place. There was a couple tweaks in the design early on which increased the steel member sizes themselves, so there was an early on cost for that. What this costs is for is for picking up a different roof type going, I believe it's TPO or EPM, I really can't recall what we're putting here, I believe it's TPO. It is TPO, I'm sorry, it's right in front of me. Anyway, we're going from a composite decking system to TPO. So therefore, it's a seamless roof where you're not going to have drips going through it long term, right? So that's part of this change. The framing is being completed at no cost, there is some additional framing included in this work. And what that framing is, is to complete, or I'm sorry, to support the lights and everything under the structure itself. And then the metal composite panels are being picked up in this cost as well. What that is, is all the fascia wrap, you know, around the perimeter of it. So as you look at the canopy, I know we don't have an illustration up here right now, there's three individual sections. There's a high section in the middle of the main entrance, then off to each side of that, there's a shorter section, just like a longer rectangle, I'm just going to put it that way. There's other shapes on it as well, but I'm just going to stick with that. But basically what we're looking at are composite metal panels. So you're going to have composite metal panels around the fascia and then you're also going to have soffit metal panels on the bottom side. And that's what this cost is for us to pick up those costs.
And those are painted, right?
Those, they are a, I'd have to look at the color, but they are a, they're painted, they're colored. I want to say they're hot baked, powder coated maybe.
Well, here's why I ask that question, Jeremy. So remember we had the issue with the painted roof over here, that metal roof where peel? We're not going to see this, with what he's proposing, we're not going to see the same issue.
Correct, yeah, this is, this is a factory applied heated paint application, it's not a, it's not a field painted application.
But it's also mostly in the vertical as opposed to the horizontal. We got in trouble at the middle school because that was on the roofing face itself and taking beating from the rain and the sleet and so forth.
All right, so we don't anticipate that, those problems here?
No.
Okay.
Any questions on this PCO in the front canopy?
Okay, the last one is the additional fencing.
Sure. So the additional fencing, this really only pertains to a couple sections of the retaining wall. And what this is, is a safety hazard, right? So the way that the elevations change on a construction site, the way the retaining wall step down, there's a couple areas where we need to extend the fencing out and that's all this cost is, is for extending that fencing out, therefore there's not a trick hazard and a fall hazard is what I'm looking for over time, it's just a safety component that will be required to have.
Any questions on this one? Okay, what's our next steps here, Dr. Berger? A perval of change order 15, if the board is, get a motion? Okay, any other questions regarding change order 15 before we do a motion in a second and a vote? Okay, I need a motion to, this does need to go away. A motion to approve change order number 15 as presented.
So moved, second.
There's a motion in second. Any more discussion? There's a motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Heidi, were you gonna abstain on this one or not? So, you're not a team here.
Not on this one, thank you.
Okay, the vote's seven zero. Okay. Next item. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Lou.
Okay, on this next item, normally don't do this, but I am now. So...
Real quick, and we'll get an update on where we're at from the original cost to change afterwards, right?
Yes, and that's reflected on the, on the first page of the change order 15 now too. So, that's all been uploaded there. And, you know, those PCOs coming in individually, we've been working on this and grinding it out. And we'll have, you know, future ones too that we're trying to get in there, but appreciate the board's patience on that. And we'll, we'll make every effort to get the stuff to you guys timely, but I know that, of course, I know we had a, you'd heard about the, the front canopy. And we beat that to death, but we'll, we'll make an effort to get that stuff to you quicker.
I'm sorry, is that on the first page of change order 15?
Uh, yeah, I'm looking at change order 15 and Elizabeth, you might, uh...
Yeah, I'm looking at the front page, but I think it shows the previous amount and then the, the addition. So, I think would be a 1.1 change for the, the change orders themselves.
Yeah, I'm gonna let our, our, I'm gonna let the crazer speak to that. Brianna?
You're looking for total number?
Yeah, I just wanted, total number and then percent where we're sitting at.
Yeah, those, those two lines broken out.
Yeah, I think we'll be right at 2% after this, but...
Oh, in terms of, okay, I'm tracking what he's saying now, yeah.
Yeah, and if you guys recall, a lot of that, a big chunk of that, about 600,000 was that, right near locker room and building. So, that, that's a big chunk of that change.
And we had...
Thank you, Brianna.
I'm sorry. Remind me, you had about 5% reserve? Is that what we had?
Yeah, 3%.
Okay. Chris, you wanna introduce the next item?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, because one, one thing that I was just thinking about was a thing that I, I think might be important to put, place in context on this next agenda item for the Board of Education is. And so, it's, it's related, but why do we have a change in the, in the contract? And it was that the immediate need, of course, and as we had the approval of Proposition 6725. Part of that second bid package was to take central office and make it a pre-camp. And then we were gonna move the high, move the current central office to the high school. And that's, you know, came out of, I'll say even years of, of preschool rising in priority for the district. You know, we want to serve kids, we want to provide early interventions. The sooner we can get to them, the better we're gonna, better job we're gonna do. And we'll see that in future academic achievement for those, those kids. So, that immediate need came to us through MoQPK. And with Kyle driving on that, and of course, Mrs. Brooks's support on that, or I guess you're a complete lift on that, right? So, that took that immediate need out and, you know, informed by RSP and knowing what was going on in our region. We were able to go back and reconsider those four rooms that we took out of the project originally. And we think we've got a pretty good number on that at about $2 million because we just bid it as a FEMA shelter at 1.9. So, that's why we have that $2 million. And that's all laid out in the master plan. I just, I know the board's more in tune with that, but for anybody who tunes into this every now and then, that may get lost in that. So, you can always go back and refer to the master plan, which is assured to change in the future. There is no doubt. But that is, the plan is as laid out now. So, that is, that is the primary reason of this change in the, in the contract with Vaughn Architects. And then I might add for a kind of see that, you know, I am learning from my network, from my colleagues all the time. And if there's anything I'm about, it's about protecting the district and saving money. The complications with, you know, any news that comes at this level, you know, that we find out maybe the night of the board meeting and isn't communicated timely, that's a challenge. So, you know, if there is anything that you know or that would protect the district or save us money. I might propose, and I don't, I want to get ahead of you, I, I know that Eric has communicated to me the timeliness of this. So, you know, perhaps an approval of this, but if you bring anything, if, you know, if we had a verbal on, hey, we think we, you know, we might have an idea. I'm sure the board wouldn't entertain that if it protects the district and it saves us money. However, our due diligence, we take virtually everything we touch through legal. So, I wouldn't want the board to make any rash decisions tonight without that due diligence and making sure that we protect the district. So, with that, I, I hope that all kind of makes sense. Perhaps, Mr. Jones, I would turn it to you or Mr. Vaughn.
So, just to build on what he said, I think the recommendation is to, if we decide to approve this contract, approve as is tonight. And then, like, like Chris said, if, if there's any modifications to be made to it, we probably need to run it to our legal, our legal department or to our lawyers to make sure that there's no unintended side effects of, of bringing stuff to the last minute to, to the boardroom. So, that would be my advice is just, you know, let's look at it as is and then if there's savings to be made later, let's, let's let the lawyers look at it and make sure that there's no unintended side effects to whatever, whatever's being proposed. Because the thing I hate about contracts is unintended side effects. And if you don't pay attention to them, they can get you. So, that would be my...
I think Mr. Vaughn's got some commentary towards that maybe.
Well, just two quick points. Dr. Berger, you had asked if there was any latitude in the percentage. And I think you and Eric had gone back and forth about that again. But you also had asked, could we cap it at that 7% and/or work down from there should the project come in at a lower budget? And that's basically kind of how this earlier conversation was started. And that is not written in here, but it needs to be because I, I think that's the best way for the district to safeguard. We think that this project is probably gonna come in right about $2 million. And one would say, well, how could that be? Because you did a storm shelter in the previous one. Well, costs have, have still, we got in just before things really spiked for the early childhood four classroom addition.
East elementary.
I mean, East elementary.
Yeah, East elementary.
The, the East elementary. The other thing I wanted to point out is that I think our reimbursable costs for this next four classroom addition is gonna be substantially lower than what we encountered before because we don't have to do as many soil borings. We don't have to survey the site again, and I think our testing is gonna be a lot less as well. So, what was in the 68,000 to 70,000 price range, I think we'll be closer to 20,000 to 22,000 on that aspect as well.
So, and, and, and I apologize, Ms. Williams, I don't want to jump ahead of you. Would, would approving as is give you guys the go on it? Because I know you're, we're wanting to go to bid in the fall on this.
Yes.
And I don't want to hear that, Eric.
October, November is probably what we should...
I know Eric gets a little nervous about that. And then we could bring a contractor vision that would reflect those things after it's been vetted appropriately, perhaps back in the June 27th board meeting, if those things hold up.
Yes. That, that is our intent, and that's why we didn't have that language here.
I don't want to make a change tonight in rash and then something bites us. That, that's, my experience has always shown, you know, with the 11th hour additions and subtractions.
Yep.
Is what, is what, is where lawsuits are born from.
Well, I would hope that we could get this language to your attorney well before the next board meeting so that you have a sense as to...
Yeah, I mean, but I, I think, let's, in order to get the agreement going, I think we approve as is and then we, and then we make the modifications next month. To everybody's satisfaction. That's my recommendation. Does anybody have any, something different they would like to propose? I'm hearing nothing. So, with that, so let's just go with what we have in our, in our board packet tonight. And then we'll, we'll work with that. Anybody agree with that?
Yes, I have a question though, Austin, before we...
Sure.
That's okay. And I'm, I'm sure that this was discussed at some point a couple of years ago. But, but since this is gonna be for our early childhood renovation, do we get to recoup any of these costs through funding?
Oh, it's a great question. And so, it really is a great question. Right now, and I'm gonna kind of look over at Ms. Brooks because if I, if I say something incorrect. We believe that the source of the MoQPK that's a, what's the term for it? But capital expenditure is a one-time, and we've already captured that.
Okay.
If they come again with it...
I just filled out the application yesterday for that.
For regular MoQPK?
Yeah.
But, so MoQPK, if you'll remember, is in two. One was an operational cost, one was a capital expenditure. Capital expenditure is a one and done as far as we know. Now, I will say that we believe, and I'm probably being more, and I'm a little speculation. They, I mean, I know that they have not had the applications that they anticipated. And they've got much more flexible in terms of just the operational cost than when we first reported acquiring the grant or going after the grant. I think we have a little hope that there could be a capital expenditure piece to that. And if it does, we'll certainly, you know, put that, it'll probably be $100,000 again, so it'd offset that cost of $100,000. But I certainly wouldn't want to do this contingent on...
Sure.
Want to get that, but that's a...
And, and so, aside from...
MoQPK, yeah.
Like, when we built our early childhood center, so much of that was reimbursed all of it.
But a different, different animal.
Because that's special education.
Early childhood special education. And I can't even do that anymore. Because people like Red City abused it.
Okay.
But I'm all about abusing it if, if we can get it out.
Worked out our fair.
Yeah, we were one of the handful...
That was my question.
We were one of the handful of districts in the entire state that were able to build early childhood centers at a completely reversible rate. And when districts start, whenever all that starts dominoing, they change the regs on that and it's no longer. However, we were able to complete ours to do that.
Okay, that, that, thank you.
Well, those are, those are, those are good and great memory on those things, Ms. Williams.
Okay, go ahead.
I have to ask one more question. It feels a little bit uncomfortable to approve this tonight and then amend it at the next meeting. But what I'm hearing is it's going to negatively impact the timing of the project, what, in the fall, if we wait until a June meeting when we have everything finalized with the contract?
That is, that's our concern. Just because we really need to get going in order to get the bid documents out.
When would you, to, to kind of underscore that, when would you, and I, you know, I think maybe Brianna more too. Eric's been asking for this as an agenda item for three months?
It's been a while, yeah.
And so, I, I know time, timing is an issue, and I want to be respectful of that. And, you know, right now, I feel confident that if there's something that makes it better, then, then we can get together on it. I, I really do, you know, I feel confident in that. Now, whether that happens or not, I'm, I'm, I'm not, no guarantee of that. It may be this contract. So, I think, you know, you're making your decision on this contract with the hope and opportunity that maybe in, in June we get, we get a revise. That protects the district or saves us money.
Hello, I mean, how long are we expecting the lawyers to take to review this? Is there an option for us? I hate to do emergency meetings. I hate that.
But we also have a scheduled meeting June 4th.
We can hustle for the June 4th board meeting if, if the board was comfortable with that and, and try to get that over for June 4th.
Is June 4th too late for you guys? I, I hope you want it. Let's go.
I, I think that would probably be fine. I mean, I, I hate to ask you guys to do a special board meeting or something like this.
We have... Our boards are already...
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah.
I think we can make that work.
So, there's a, I need a motion to postpone Prop 6725, with check number two, to June 4th.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion and second. Any more discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? I heard seven zero. Okay, health and ancillary benefit plan.
And I'm gonna ask, thank you, Monty. Thank you, guys. I'm gonna ask Elizabeth to put up the ranked summary. And this is another big, larger piece of our budget, and we're gonna ask her approval for this piece of it tonight. And of course, June will be, be an actual official complete budget document. But what you're looking at here is the benefiting, the health and benefit package for the district. And I'll remind the board that that top level, that $2,500 corridor at $485, that is the district sponsored. Anything below that in that group of cells under $2,500 corridor, that becomes a voluntary option. So, really, our district puts all of our resource in the health insurance premium. Everything that you're looking at to the right of that, looking at this border, and I guess that word to, to the right of it. Whether it be dental, vision, life, those are all voluntary benefits. So, whenever I say that, I'm saying that, that the employee has to voluntarily take part in that, and it comes out of their paycheck. So, really, what's, what the, the expenditure for the district is in that insurance premium. And that is a, you know, a, a competitive product in our region for health insurance. So, the plan has virtually no changes to it other than a 12% increase. So, I also offered, and I'm not gonna ask that she bring it up there because the summary really pulls all that together. But in one of your artifacts is a historical rate change. And with CSD, we have done very well. Now, we've been healthy, but we've done very well. So, going back to 2000, or FY '20, we took a 2% increase, then to 21, a 2% decrease. Then in 22, a 2% decrease, and 23, a 2% decrease, then a 7% increase, and then again here with our 12% increase on this. So, you know, this is just a, 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 comes as a cost benefit analysis for CSD. What were your cost to claims ratio? How much money did you put in and what went out? And then they take a snapshot of you in a district and puts you in a category with other school districts, and you assess that increase. So, it's not a good year for us. That 12% equals about $175,000 for us. I would, I would characterize this as a bit of a blinking light, but you are already in a consortium. That is the big thing that you can do to protect yourself. So, you, you kind of ride this wave out and hope for, hope for the best moving forward. I know this has been a, a very alarming for the entire CSD consortium. And they, I've listened to a lot of webinars on CSD and our health insurance this year than I have probably ever in my entire career. They're trying to do, you know, how do you get out in front of that? You get people healthier. So, some of it's just gonna be the health census of your, the age, the sex, the health census of your entire group. But certainly if you're doing small things like, for example, and, and Dr. Wade kind of leads these things out for us. But if you're doing things that are to make your employees healthier, competitions, I say that, Glenn also, am I right, Glenn? You know, those things can make healthier employees and thus, you know, a healthier health census that might impact your rates. Now, remember, we're in with a giant group too, so we gotta do our part. So, it's not, like I said, it's not a very good year for us, a 12% increase, double digits is my blinking light. And if the question were, what, what can you do? You can't move the needle much. You can move the needle a little bit. And is there a time that potentially the district would say, do we need to look at another consortium? Yes, but there's factors with that. Are you healthy? Is your district healthy? Because you're not gonna get into any consortium if you're, if you're not healthy. So, I know there's questions, and I'll fill those as I can, but my recommendation is approval and ride the wave, but monitor. Certainly bring this to the board's attention as, you know, this is something we need to be looking at moving forward.
Two questions. Well, a question and then an idea if it's legal. But, one, so when the, when the premiums go up, so if I'm understanding you correctly, is it for all districts to participate in this plan? Or are districts essentially assessed, they're put into a tier, and that tier is adjusted?
The latter, the tier.
Okay, so we were in an unhealthy tier.
Yeah, and some of our decrease was when we were healthy and we were put in a better tier. And of course, this, we're, we're not.
Okay. I don't know if this is possible or not, but I promise you that there are spouses of employees in this district who... So, for example, I'll use myself as an example. If I put Mackenzie on my insurance and she declined the districts, I would have to pay a $100 monthly premium for that.
Yeah.
That times 12 is equivalent to one of these premiums. So, I don't know how many instances that would exist in the district, but that could, that's a cost savings measure in theory to, to offset.
It's a great to offset.
There's probably a lot of labor that would go into it. You have to have employees volunteer for it, but I'm using myself as an example to, yes.
So, my wife did that because, you know, I, I covered her. But I think the district put that money in the 403B.
No, let me, let me roll back here a little bit.
Back, years ago.
Yes, that's right. And so consort, it's not against law, consortiums allow it, but that's termed adverse selection. So it really, it just crashes your, your health census, you know, it can, in a way, because you're taking healthy people potentially out.
Correct.
So if you're a healthy young male, you say, I don't want the insurance, I'll go buy it on the market, right? But you get out of health census, and that impacts actuary, which is gonna bring back in eventually higher rates.
Correct.
And so the consortium does not allow for that, and I can tell, I've been part of three consortiums, none of the three I've been part of will allow that, for that very reason. Yeah, adverse selection, but it's a good idea. And it used to be done, you know, it used to give a 403 option, where you just, you know, you'd say, well, we'll take the premium and lower the amount of, in this case, the 485, but we'll give you $400 and save some money. But none of, none of those games are allowed to be played anymore.
So, so we're not allowed to put-
And typically, so if someone's thinking, well, wait a minute, I know an employee that's in there, consortiums allow grandfather clause. But then, as everybody that new comes on, you can't play that game anymore. So we may, if I, if we had somebody, if Anita or Veronica, we may have somebody or three grandfather clauses in there, do you think?
Not sure.
Yeah, Dr. Way didn't believe in them. It's possible we do, or somebody's on them, we're breaking the rules. No, you're grandfathered in, you just can't bring on any of those.
What about, so again, with my employee, what about actively participating in like health screens or participating in a program where folks set health goals throughout the year? A lot of corporations volunteer to do stuff.
Yeah.
And if you don't participate, then your premiums are-
Those are all things that the consortium are talking about, because they've got a, they've got an issue on their hand. Now, that, you know, maybe it'll flatten out in the upcoming years, but those are exactly the webinars that Dr. Way and myself and Anita have been on.
So they're using Anthem, right? Because Anthem has those programs, I mean, Signet does too. I mean, I go to a health coach, and I sit there and talk to somebody, and then they give me extra money in my HRA. Okay, I'll sit there and talk to you to get extra money in my HRA. But, you know, the other thing is, and I don't know if they pay for it, like, they paid for me for a Peloton account. So now I got Peloton for free. So I don't know if our consortium does that, but they're doing that, because the ounce of prevention is the worth of a pound of cure. And so the question becomes, is this consortium allowing for that ounce of prevention? And our, and does it incentivize our employees to, to participate and be more active?
I mean, yeah, I'll look at Dr. Way and look for a cue, he doesn't look like he wants to add on it. There are some things in play, so maybe-
Things that we remember is like heart disease, diabetes, those are the ones that we're trying to bring down the premiums for all of us in the consortium. So they have education and workshops for those kind of things, but those are the things that kill us. When we go that loss ratio is like, how many people are on meds, how many meds they take, and how much are these meds costing? And so it's those kind of things.
I apologize for going down the, but, you know, whenever I've been through this in the past, one consortium, they did put this in play. But, you know, basically, it was, you had to do certain things, or you paid a different premium than those that didn't. Now, our district has not, our consortium has not pulled that lever yet. If we had a year or two in double digits, you could, you would have some, there would absolutely be some of those conversations and options, I think, to add us.
Do we shop around or are we, are we going to your company?
They shop around, so they shop around within the CSD, and every two years, that's right, by statute too.
And then ours is on a three-year run too.
It is, yeah.
Like, three years.
We can cycle to the different tiers.
Any other questions? How's sports football doing this year, Aaron?
That's not my department. We're self-funded, so I'm not in a-
Well, see, we used to be self-funded too.
Yeah.
And then, if the starting is cheaper, then you mean self-funded.
Our rates are going up, I was just looking, I think the district pays for employee coverage about $750 a month. For a $1,500 deductible, for employee only.
So better, better plan, a richer plan, but costs more?
Yeah, it's a really good plan, but yeah, it's pricey, and it's pricey for, for families to be covered through that. But, you know, the other thing to remember, and for what it's worth, I mean, that's not a huge chunk, but the pension is based off of salary and the cost of health insurance. So it's, you know, adds up a little bit throughout the life of the career.
The board president's looking at me like, don't say anything else, but that's been a real good education piece for our, our salary committee, because what, I really feel comfortable, our salary committee could now tell you, that's money that we're not getting on our salary schedule. We put that right out there in the slide, that that's $200,000-ish, it's 175 is our projection, that, that we can't put to the salary schedule. You know, so it's making sure they understand that, you know, we're not on some state plan where the state pays for insurance. That is a local decision, and it's coming out of a local conference, you know, so it's a good process.
So, any other questions before we have a motion to approve the CSD health and ancillary benefit plan for FY '25? Do you need that motion?
Second.
Motion is second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I heard seven to zero. At risk?
Who's gonna do this? Oh, the Brooks do. I'll start, sure. Thank you, guys.
I don't have my glasses, so, right. I shared with you a charting here about proficient advanced levels, levels for the special education students. And you could see that the majority of the areas, we were higher than the state in those levels. So that is awesome, and I attribute that, that success to our special ed teachers sitting in those impact meetings that are being led. And really, really focusing on those standards that the students are not being successful at, and going back, looking at what they qualify for special education, seeing how that's impacting those. So our special education numbers continue to increase. A lot of that is transfer ends. We are seeing a high number of transfer end students that have IEPs, so. I included in here that we continue to monitor special education student growth, not only on their evaluate scores and their assessment scores, but also on their IEP goals. That's what the special education teachers are, that is, that's part, we have to make sure those students are meeting their goals, which their goals go back to aligning to these state standards. So that, I would say, continues to grow, that whole monitoring process.
Can I ask a quick question?
Yes.
When we have a transfer, do we do a different review for that IEP, or do we take it at face value? How do we address that?
So when a student transfers from a school district in-state, we request those records, we get those records. Our psych examiners review those to determine if we want to accept that evaluation. Usually, if it's an in-state, I mean, it's pretty, you either qualify for special education or you don't, so. And then we offer comparable services on what that student was receiving at their school, and then we have to hold an IEP within 30 days to offer them services that we'll provide. If it's an out-of-state, the only difference is, is we have to evaluate, evaluate them to determine if they qualify in Missouri. Because every state has different qualifications for students, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Brooks?
If you want to go to number four, the numbers that keep going there.
Sorry, I can't read a lot.
Oh, you're good, you're good. I'll speak to, for, we say academy, but that's really Missouri options, and then our grad rate for long-term suspensions. Attendance is 76%, that's for the 22-23 school year. It was 81% the year before. It is one of those things with students that are in Missouri options. You know, attendance has been on everybody's mind, and looking to improve it, but it's one that's definitely, definitely hard, it's kids, a lot of them are in this position, because attendance has been an issue previously. So I don't, I don't make too much, you know, out of that number as far as where that is, because we've had decent success of getting kids through the HICEP test that they take, so they can get their diploma, you know. You know, it's Missouri options, it's the regular call, you get them. So, and I'll speak a little bit more on our success rate on that. And then on the long-term suspensions, we've got numbers going back all the way to '15-'16. In the last two years, I touched on this last year, we trended up on the number of long-term suspensions. But on the other side of that, and Dr. Berger has been a big part of this too, the restorative approach, the length of time those long-term will last, you know, the speed with which we get them back in the building, I think has helped our numbers as far as keeping kids in school and getting them to graduation. But the increase, I will tell you, you know, the number one thing would be TACV, that's where those numbers have increased the most with that. Currently enrolled out of that 22-23, you know, it was 12 kids, three graduated from there, six either dropped or homeschooled, went homeschool route, and one moved, transferred on that. And then I threw this in, because, you know, we've talked about it the last couple of years, with the grad pathways and freshman failure rates. The grad pathway is one of the biggest reasons those came about, was worrying about options for our kids, our freshmen. When they get behind, they end up on a no options path, or they drop. So we can see here in green, since we've had that in place, since we've had the pathways and we expanded options, you can see, if, go back up just a little bit there. There's a number of courses right there historically, and now you can scroll down a little bit. You can see how that increased to 58, you know, our seven different courses, we're up now to 65. So it's definitely created more options. And then our failure rates per student, you know, we got under one, none of these were ever under one per student. Now, that number does not mean that every one of our kids had an F, but the numbers, you know, equal out to like one per student. And then per course, and if you think about 20, let's say, to 25 students in a class, and we're getting a number under three, we like that, 2.49. This is a projection based on first semester, it's just double numbers. So it's not a guarantee that's where it'll be, but it's been pretty close, and we've done projections on that previously. So that again lowers our numbers that we're gonna have that are at risk. And that's, you know, it's prevention more than the things we have to do to help the kids after the fact. So these numbers, we're right, that's a good thing that's going on there, freshman. Because when you fall behind as a freshman too, it's already set down.
Very much.
Yeah. And Mr. Brooks is good to present places around the state that are about this.
Awesome.
All right, go ahead and scroll. I'll go back up to where it just says Missouri options. Ten that were in the program last year, four graduated last year, two have already graduated throughout the course of this year, three homeschool route, one still enrolled. So we're hoping 70% success, you know, where I would say those 10, if we didn't have no options or traditional academy, 50% would have been, we'd have been happy with that. Since we've done this, and Kim Brown, the work he does, and no options, it's been really successful for us. We do have a few more kids in it this year. I won't throw out, you know, a preliminary number, but it's trending to be probably our best year success-wise that we've had too, so that's awesome.
So the six are trending, are going to graduate.
Four did last year, two have this year, right?
So of those four-
So two, two that were in 22-23, they stayed on, right?
Okay.
They graduated now, at some point.
Okay, gotcha, so we have four from the current. I guess, how many are still in it, or what?
That's from, that's last year's cohort, that we're talking about, that we're in. We've got about 18 kids in there now, but that's, you know, that's for the 23-24 cohort, that makes sense.
Okay.
Those numbers will have next year on this report. Yeah, so it looks like the ones still enrolled, we're hopeful, then that would be seven out of 10, you know, that we've got there.
Okay, gotcha.
So when they go to homeschool, we, that, it's out, whether they graduate or not, has nothing to do with us?
A lot of times, they'll say they're gonna work on an online program.
Right, and we can't do anything about that, right? We can't.
The only service, like, if a special education student goes homeschool, we can still service them for special education, but that's if they're enrolled.
And in that school setting.
So when it said, I'm sorry, when it says 10 students enrolled in no options in 23-24?
22-23.
He's reading the next line.
The next line.
Oh, yeah, I should probably say for, yeah, that probably should say the same thing. Now, no, 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 we've got a couple more enrollees that I probably didn't have on that for the 23-24.
Okay.
In the second semester, I probably, you're right, I didn't get those on there. Yeah, that came in that semester, and I didn't get those added to that for the 23-24.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I guess there's a higher level question. This report is primarily based on data from last school year, or is it, okay.
Yeah, it is. Because we don't have all the results.
His at-risk stuff, mine at-risk.
I don't even have, I couldn't tell you a complete, you know, potential.
Understand.
Those one day at school left, but even, you know, and added LTOs on there, or where we are with, because we have sometimes those Missouri options, it's right at the end, you know, we'll make it two. So that's why we keep it a year behind. We get a complete picture on it.
Okay, so, question to you guys, Ms. Smith and Dr. Berger's. April of the following, May of the following school year, they're appropriate, want to review it, or is this something we could review earlier?
It's a good question.
We'll look at our program evaluation schedule.
My numbers are of this year.
Got it.
That's why I don't see, I don't see why these, but I think this should be-
Yeah, it could be rolled out.
I think it should be too, it's the year this program evaluation is in the world.
Right, we've thought that for all these years, we're like-
I mean, the fact that the two of you are presenting together, let's-
Right, I mean, it's two, I mean, in my, in my eyes, it's two totally different things, because, yeah.
Okay, I thought this was, yeah, I didn't even realize it was two different subjects that, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, let's take a look at this.
Yeah, it's a good suggestion, Mr. Lewis.
I mean, in the majority of this stuff that I report on, I reported on already in, I reported earlier in the year, so.
And really, I mean, and I'm not, it would make it even more clutter if you're gonna say with the IEP students, why would the DLs not be in on that? You know, but I think you're separate things.
Yeah.
Really, but it's just, no, it's about risk. Yes, yeah.
Well, that's good.
Right, it looks great, we just don't know, we wanna see it.
Good stuff is happening with kids.
No, I'm here, it's my person.
Right, which one of us did better on this?
Well, we don't know, because he's last year and yours is this year.
Sure, sure. Yeah.
Okay, any more questions for the Brooks team? The one that is just incredible to see this kind of movement on this kind of subjects, because it is extreme.
Great job.
I mean, did already, but I wanted to give a shout out. Kim Brown does absolutely remarkable work with those students. There's a lot of kids that have been breached, you know, by these. I don't have a reason, he's done the grade before. It drives them around and takes the HICEP test.
Okay, next item on the agenda, unless any other questions. We have the CSIP reports. So we have the middle school, any questions there? So I want to address the evidence-based. I think now that we've gotten through the first year of that, I think what our plan was now to evaluate how well that did do. I know I have been on, I have been talking to Ms. Vakas about looking at our MAP scores and kind of determining the kids that were there versus the kids that weren't, and kind of seeing how those kids performed on the map. So I think she has a lot of, now that she has a year under her belt, you know, I think we need to look at the data and determine how, how well it did or did not do. And then also, I think we need to look at tweaking it. And I know also with the new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum coming in, I am sure she will have some ideas about, you know, you know, what needs to happen there, what doesn't need to happen there. And so I think, I appreciate the comment- And so, I think, I appreciate the comments that were made tonight, because they were all spot on. I just think we don't have the data yet to, to provide the answers. And I think that.
Well, what I guess I would add to that, you know, I know that as Ms. Backus presented earlier in the year, during the work presentation, we did make some adjustments a semester to address some of the concerns that we saw, knowing that this was a pilot year. And I know that there's already talks about a few tweaks that we would make, but again, I would warn against making any big decisions until we.
Yeah, until we do the.
Have the EOC scores. And I would, I would suggest that Dr. Broadway Yates includes this when we do the Student Achievement Report, you know, when we usually do that in the fall and take a look at the growth of students. Or lack of it, if there is, I anticipate a growth, but the growth of students pre-evidence-based to evidence-based and see how that impacted learning within the cohort groups. And so, overall, just within that group of students. So, I have this group of students who are in sixth grade, were not on an evidence-based system. As they transitioned to seventh grade, in one, how did they do comparatively to the year prior? And looking at some of that cohort data, I think will give us a clearer picture of the effectiveness of this as opposed to just overall general thought, so.
Yeah, and I, I agree with that. So, but the bottom line here is, we need now, we have the summer to do the evaluation and kind of look at the stuff and once we get the MAP and EOC data back. And that's kind of, I think, gonna help us.
That's usually reported, usually in September, typically September, October.
But the plan is to expand to the high school next school year or is it?
Yeah, after.
Okay.
So, and, you know, and we always knew, and if, if you'll remember in that, when we brought evidence-based for the board and certainly through the study group process, taking it to the high school is the huge lift. And so, we're, we didn't wanna put that on a hard timeline because there is the GPA fact, there's a lot of factors that any school's gonna have trouble taking that to the high school. Now, we wanna, I don't wanna be on the bleeding edge, but we wanna be out there in front. But that is gonna be, it's a heavy, heavy lift.
We do have another year, we have, we've already, we have a team of high school teachers who have already started the training process around that. We are also bringing in speakers here for our back-to-school days to begin working that process with our high school folks as well.
And then the issue about teacher burnout with evidence-based, or is that something we're seeing?
Well, that, that was something that we were seeing a little bit first semester. I think, you know, Ms. Backus and I worked out and, you know, we, we worked on that. And I don't know, I, she could probably speak to how that worked second semester. But yeah, we were seeing a little bit of stress in our teachers' first semester. And so, she came to me with a lot of ideas and we brainstormed them and put some ideas in place to hopefully eliminate or alleviate some of that, so.
Yeah, so originally we were reporting on every single priority standard in a content area. So, like, for instance, sixth grade ELA has 22 priority standards. So, where, when we were, like, we'll just call it the old-school grading system, you were putting in one grade for one assignment. So, one assignment essentially could have four standards in it. So, now the one assignment is being reported four different times and you're talking for 132 kids, so four times 132, that's putting in one assignment that many times. And so, just the, the tediousness of it was cumbersome. And so, they just needed time, needed time. So, at semester, we went from the individualized priority standards to the umbrella standard, to where it went from 22 to 11. That has alleviated a lot of stress, where it's still very, it is narrowed where we, as teachers, they know, okay, if a kid is getting, say, a two in an area, how to target that area of the kid. So, that has helped, but that, that came second semester.
And there are no automation tools for that?
No, sir. I'm, I'm doing it for two classes right now for two teachers that I'm out. And so, I have lived it myself the second semester and it is a lot of work, I will say that.
So, we need.
So, I will say one thing with the calendar committee. They listened and put in two additional no student contact days for teachers. I know that was a big win for the middle school.
Great point, that's a great.
And so, I know that they were very appreciative that the calendar committee listened to that concern.
Any other questions on the middle school CSIP report? Okay, Wes CSIP, anything, anybody wants to bring up? EC and special education? High school? West? Sorry, I said west, excuse me, east, I apologize. And central office? Okay, I gotta ask my question. Go ahead, want my to ask?
I just wanted to make a statement because, you know, I've, I've listened to a podcast every day from the New York Times and, and one of them was on, on school attendance. And then I noticed that, you know, a couple of nights later, there was a program on the national news about school attendance. And so, I think while we, we of course want kids in front of our teachers and in the classroom and I, I can't, I mean, it's so, so very important, but it's, it's not, it's not just Wright City. It's a national issue that everyone is facing. And, you know, COVID just changed mindsets and it's gonna, I think it's just gonna take a while to get them back. I think our school, our leaders do a great job of incentivizing kids to be there. And while, yes, I would love to see attendance go up, I just don't know that there's a magic wand that we can wave to, to make it happen. And I just, I think it was like after the last board meeting that I, I saw both of those, both of those programs come up.
Well, I know, I know Chris did say something to me that Dr. Salvo has been doing a lot of brainstorming on this, so I think, I'm not, I'm not trying to overpromise anything or anything, but.
No pressure.
But, but, you know, from what, from what Chris tells me, she has some ideas that, you know, we, we can start having serious conversations about, you know, some, maybe some different approaches and stuff like that. Hopefully, I didn't overpromise anything.
Bright and feverishly again.
That's details of Austin.
You only make that mistake once.
I'll get over it. So, I'm gonna, what question am I gonna ask you, Mr. Brooks? Now that it's done.
What's the?
Math testing?
Oh, it's done, oh, yeah.
How'd it go?
Testing was good. Just, you know, in conversation with students and what they were telling me was like, you know, yeah, I was prepared. I wasn't bothered by it or it makes it easy, you know, you hear that sometimes too. So, still confident, right? I was confident before, but now.
Ms. Backus, how'd it go in the middle school?
Done. No, it went, it went good, our kids were confident, saying this is one of the easiest tests that I've ever taken, which you never. Yeah. So, but in all seriousness, our kids did, well, they walked in confident, they walked out confident.
Mr. Crowe, you going out on a high note?
Yeah, I hope so. Same as Brooks and same as Taylor, you know, the kids sometimes don't give you an honest, they just wanna please you. So, like, oh, yeah, piece of cake, and you're like, ugh. But, no, as you can see in our CSIP report, I really feel that all of our kiddos and both of our student groups are starting to peak at the right time. And, I mean, if you look at the data, that's where they need to be, when they need to be there. And just, you know, in the back of your head, it's still a kid sitting down to take a test and you hope for the best, so.
I will bring up one other point. I don't know if it's just that adult ADB taking over, you know, just watching in a room there for a while and like, man, this isn't tests, it's several hours, so just being locked in, you know, to do that test. So, I, I was sitting there, I was thinking about that, it's a task for our kids, because they do, you know, we talk a lot of times about grit and all that stuff, they've got to be able to sit there and work through those tests and be a mess out there, because they're quite lengthy, a lot of them. Some of them were started at seven, getting them done close to lunch, you know, and, yeah.
They're ranked, is there a rank in there? No, they don't.
They use the bathroom and all that, but still, they're locked in.
It's different to the board meeting.
While they're working on it.
Not door lock, lock focus, focus would have been.
Yeah, yeah, they, they're focused, right.
Make sure plenty of bathroom breaks are happening there.
Well, and the only, I'm gonna add one more thing. The one thing too that I worry about is we have such a good handle on where our kids are at in this school district, but what that requires is testing, testing, formative testing, gathering all that data. And you hope when it's time for the state test that they're not like, you've been testing me all year and you're gonna reward me with this big one. Obviously, that's always in the back of my head too. But no, Wes, the overall from teachers and kids was, we got this, we did it. And, yeah, a pretty good feeling, pretty positive feeling coming out the other side of testing.
Well, one of the complaints I've been hearing is that we're overtesting. And, and I think, I think one of the things that we need to, to look at is, you know, if we're not using the assessments, then maybe, you know, maybe it's time to start documenting what we're doing, looking at what we're really using and then scissoring away what we're not using and maybe go through that pruning process to, to start looking at some of this stuff, you know. You know, just, you know, what can we prune, what, what should we prune, what shouldn't we prune? Because obviously, you know, what happens is you prune a lot and then it grows.
And I know everyone's ready to go home here, but I feel like that amount of testing we do, that's why we have such a good handle on where every kid's at. So, yeah, that's, that's gonna be a.
Balance.
Yeah, that'll be a, an undertaking to try to figure out.
Well, the feedback, I guess, from some of the teachers, I'm sorry? Do I need to be quiet?
No, you're good. No, that's fine.
No, some of the feedback is, oh, we're overtesting. I mean, because this is data that I can use.
Yeah, I had a couple of teachers last year that left. That was one of their, their big three reasons why they decided to move on, is they felt like they were just testing kids.
I have one question.
Go.
Okay, I'll try to be quick, guys. This is somewhat related to our CSIP goals, but when does next client survey go out to staff and families?
September.
September, okay. I just, I just want to put a reminder out there, I know we've talked about this, to please use a survey format that's completely confidential, I just want that to stay on our radar. I think that's so important. And I know this sounds like it's in the weeds and maybe it is, but I would really, I think the board should have the opportunity, maybe not every year, but sometimes, to look at the questions before they go out to staff and families, because that's our, kind of our one opportunity to get feedback from the community, from our staff community. And ultimately, it is the seven of us who are accountable. And so, I think at least every couple of years, that would be useful.
Okay, anything else on CSIP reports? Okay, consent agenda.
Full D, please.
Pardon me?
Full D.
Full D, okay. How about employment? Does anybody have any issues with, with employment? I almost had an issue, but I didn't.
You were almost related?
My sister's step, sister's stepson, life work efficient again. Okay, so other than item D, anything else? Okay, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda sans item D.
So, second.
There's a motion, second, any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? I heard seven, zero. Item D, Kyle, what's, what's up?
Please, Ed.
Yeah, my name's Ed. Okay, so.
I make a motion to approve the bills.
Second.
Okay, are we gonna pull Kyle's item out of the bills or Kyle, you're just gonna abstain? Okay, there's a motion to approve the bills. Second?
Second.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Abstain?
Abstain.
Six, zero, one. Okay, in accordance with 610021 and Rice Statute of Missouri, the R2 Board of Education will meet in closed session to discuss one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation, free personnel, and 13th, personally identifiable information. Any motion going to closed session?
Second.
Any more discussion, we'll call Austin, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, let's take a.